I call the March 13th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order at this time. Roll call, please.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Ron Heberlein. Matt Constantine.
Here.
Sam Skoll.
Here.
Yana Semenova.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Thank you.
Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience, either here in the City Hall or via Zoom, would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
I currently have no attendees on Zoom.
Do we have anyone in the audience? If you do wish to testify, please fill out a testimony card that will state your name and address. Those testimony cards are on the left-hand side of the room. Do we have any testimony cards? None. All right. From an administrative matters perspective, the February 14th, oh, Valentine's Day, 2024 meetings were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Head nods. Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved as distributed? Perfect. All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Matters before the Planning Commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi-judicial hearings conducted by the City Development Review Board, DRB. The Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the Planning Commission. If you wish to testify tonight, you need to complete a testimony card. For those who are in person, here in person, please complete a testimony card, locate it at the side of the room, and hand it to the recorder. For members of the public participating remotely with the Zoom meeting platform, digital testimony cards are already filed with the recorder, but we ask that you please indicate now or after the presentation a desire to testify by sending a message to the recorder at City Hall using the Zoom chat function. For those people joining the meeting by phone only, you will be unmuted after the staff presentation and asked one at a time if you wish to testify. If you have not previously submitted a digital testimony card, please request one now using the Zoom chat function. Please note that testimony may also be submitted by email during the hearing by emailing the following email address: Then please confirm with the recorder through the Zoom chat option that you emailed your comments. Your email will be then read into the record. Remain in the meeting until your comments are received and read aloud. Written comment or testimony received after the public hearing has closed cannot be considered. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address at the beginning of your comments. Or, if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted and make your statement. When your name is called to testify, if you are present in council chambers, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone for the record. If you are participating in a meeting remotely using the Zoom, phone, or web platform, please wait to be unmuted by the recorder before stating your name and comments for the record. When you testify, please address your comments to the finding criteria outlined in the staff report and applicable regulation that city staff cites at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the Planning Commission are fairly complicated. For that reason, we especially appreciate your specific recommendations or suggestions that you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If we have a large number of public interested in testifying, we may limit the time allotted to each member of the public to three minutes. At the end of your testimony, members of the commission may have questions for you. Thank you for taking the time to participate in the hearing tonight and help us to deal with these issues. So we've got Resolution Number LP 240002, Resolution of the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission, recommending the Wilsonville City adopt an update to the stormwater master plan. Public hearing is now open. Staff, would you present?
Sure. Well, good evening, Chair and members of the commission. My name's Kerry Rappold. I'm the city's natural resources manager. And as you've seen, you have the staff report, the conclusionary findings, and the public record for the master plan. So with me here tonight is Angela Whalen with Brown &amp; Caldwell. Her team prepared the master plan. So we've been working on this for about three years. And so it feels really good to be sitting here and to, you know, finally have a public hearing. There's been a lot of great work in terms of what was put into this plan and, you know, some of the things that we were able to do with this plan that we haven't done with a previous master plan, which we'll talk a little bit about. But yeah, it's just, like I said, it's great to get to this point and to have a discussion with the Planning Commission. So tonight, we'll just cover some topics related to the master plan. Cover a little bit about the public engagement that we did. That was really back in 2021. But I'll talk a little bit about what we're doing to follow up with that also. And then we'll go through the process of developing the master plan in terms of how the information was gathered and how ultimately the capital projects were developed and the policies. And then we'll look a little bit at a really important topic is the regulatory drivers and basically how we have to look at our responsibilities in terms of the Clean Water Act. We have a local permit that we issued. It's called the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, NPDS. And so we do a lot in terms of compliance with that permit, and this master plan is an important part of it. And then we'll wrap it up with a description of some of the capital projects and the program that we're bringing forward that ultimately we'll be implementing over the next 20 years. And then at the end, we'll just talk a little bit about the next steps. So back in 2021, we did a virtual open house, and then we had a survey posted on Let's Talk Wilsonville. And we had over 90 respondents that provided their feedback. We were looking to gather information, but also engage them in the process. And so we had that posted for about six weeks. And overall, there was a very favorable impression of the stormwater system here in Wilsonville. You know, we do a lot to adequately maintain that, to look at our existing infrastructure, but also to plan for the future. And so I think that's really reflected in the type of system we have. And, you know, we don't really get a large number of complaints. We don't have a lot of issues, certainly with flooding and other things that some other communities deal with. And then there were some areas of concern or topics that people, you know, brought up like water quality and flooding and what we can do to protect our habitats, especially our receiving waters, whether they're Beckman Creek or the Coffee Lake wetlands. And then we're looking to do, like I said, it's already been posted on the Let's Talk Wilsonville site. We're going to leave this up till the middle of April. But it's a follow-up survey, basically to see have any points of view changed over the last three years. It also gives people an idea of the project list that we've adopted with this or that we're looking to adopt with this plan and allows them to actually inquire about other topics that they might be interested in learning about. So we're just trying to bring it full circle in regards to that engagement. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Angela, and she'll walk through the development of the plan and some of the elements.
Thanks, Kerry. Good evening. I know that you've seen some of these slides before, so I'll talk kind of at a high level and, you know, obviously field questions towards the end. But the master plan processes Kerry mentioned has been going on over the past three years. And the process really began with a thorough needs assessment. We utilized that public survey to solicit feedback from the public. We also submitted an internal survey to members of engineering, community development, and public works to engage them, but also understand better about what the issues are and those project needs that would really drive the development of our plan. We conducted a series of site visits, investigated the different problem areas. And from that effort, we moved forward into a series of technical evaluations where we looked at our hydrologic and hydraulic modeling efforts. There was a model developed with the previous master plan in 2012 that we updated to reflect current development conditions and better assess locations where we might have capacity deficiencies in our system. We had a subcontractor who assisted with a thorough stream assessment. He did field walks, looking at certain areas of the stream channel to identify those that were at risk of hydromodification or excessive erosion and those that would benefit from a vegetation management program so that you can remove invases and preserve the integrity of the streams. We looked at water quality retrofit opportunities and where we could install water quality projects to treat otherwise untreated stormwater runoff, but also locations where existing facilities could be retrofit to improve function and water quality treatment. From there, we had a series of what we called project opportunity areas. So that was a long list of locations. And we worked with the city to refine that list and identify how those different project needs could be met in the context of this plan. We developed capital projects, programs, fact sheets, which you'd see in your packet, and also the cost estimates associated with those. Moving forward, we documented our findings in the report that you have. And we looked also at staffing projections. So in order to implement this plan, would it require additional staff needs? And with the additional assets that we're looking at, will that create additional maintenance obligations for public work staff? We prioritized projects and then ultimately came up with our capital improvement plan. Also, as Kerry mentioned, the timing of this master plan presented a unique opportunity to integrate some of the technical deliverables that were associated with our NPDS, our municipal stormwater permit, as well as our TMDL, or our Total Maximum Daily Load Implementation Plan. So each of those permit-related drivers had different requirements that were due. And those requirements ultimately led us to identify specific project needs in the context of the master plan, but also do a thorough staffing evaluation so that we were able to also look at the regulatory obligations on part of the city and how the city would be prepared to implement their permit over the five-year permit period. So as mentioned, when we got done...
Oh, sorry.
Just skipped ahead. When we got done with the technical evaluations, we had a series of 47 project opportunity areas. So that's what the map shows right now. Each of those project opportunity areas were thoroughly discussed. Project objectives were assessed. In many cases, a single project opportunity area may address multiple objectives, such as water quality and capacity. Through those workshops with the city, we were able to identify which project opportunities we needed to actually develop into a conceptual project. And those conceptual projects would be considered a funded project opportunity, so one that we costed and assumed in the context of this plan. Some of those project opportunity areas may be better assessed or better addressed with a program or some sort of annual funding mechanism that would be able to address the project needs more comprehensively and citywide. So that would be a vegetation management program and a private water quality facility maintenance program. There's also a list, you know, we couldn't do all of them. You couldn't fund all of them. So we have memorialized those unfunded project needs or those other project opportunity areas in the context of the master plan as well. So in summary, the funded capital projects, those are considered a one-time cost. In some cases, those one-time costs may be phased. So we have developed 15 capital project cost estimates and conceptual designs, and each of those has a fact sheet associated. Now, those 15 capital projects reflect 20 separately costed project phases. So again, recognizing that some of those projects could extend for a longer duration and may be actually constructed in a phased approach. There are four planning... Sorry. I was just going to say, also with the capital program, there's four planning projects. And overall, all of those projects are scheduled as... The higher priority projects generally are those that would be constructed in the near term, so in the next five-year period. The intermediate priorities in the midterm, and then some of the lower priority needs are those that'll take a lot longer, scheduled for the final 10-year period. So as mentioned, we also had annual program needs. And so there were six annual programs identified. The one I wanted to mention more specifically, though, is P3 and P4. P4 in particular, you see that that's quite a large project cost. And what that program effort is, is a continuation of your 2014 consolidated... Charbonneau Consolidated Improvement Program, which was a program identifying repair and replacement activities in the Charbonneau area. There's a few key project locations in Charbonneau as well. So this program assumes continuation, not redundancy in those pipe networks. But that program is anticipated over a 20-year period. So collectively, we're looking at approximately $70 million worth of capital projects and program costs. In conjunction with that, we do have staffing allocations identified, both from public works and engineering, to support either deferred maintenance or continued maintenance of the new assets. For staffing, for the staffing in the engineering/community development departments, those staffing needs are needed to manage the capital projects that are proposed over this planning period.
So I'll just wrap it up here. As I mentioned previously, you know, we've posted a new survey to the Let's Talk Wilsonville site. And there's also information on that site that has the capital project list. And so people can see where these projects are, you know, get a quick snapshot of it if they don't want to read through the entire plan. We're scheduled to take this to the City Council for a public hearing on April 1st, for the first reading, and then the second reading on April 15th. And then what's going to happen, once the master plan's adopted, we're going to start a rate study. And the rate study is actually going to look at both the stormwater master plan and the master plan that was recently adopted for the wastewater treatment plant. So there's close to about $200 million that are associated with those two plans. So it's going to be a very interesting discussion in regards to what that rate structure looks like as far as the utility fees and the system development charges that will support these capital programs. So we're certainly available. Take any questions that you have.
Yes, go ahead. Thank you for the information. Really helpful. So just so I understand, there were 47, you have a fancy name, but problem areas that were targeted. Are those addressed in the capital improvement plan completely? All 47 are?
For the most part, yes. There were some locations where, for example, our uncalibrated model was showing flooding, but the city didn't report any flooding there. And so just that need is in as priority as...
Gotcha. And then you call them, a portion of those said funded. So there is funding existing for those projects, but there's obviously a lot of unfunded projects also in this. Is that correct?
Well, even where it indicates funded, that's going to be dependent on this rate study.
Oh, so it's dependent on future rates increases?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
And there might be a portion of that that we can certainly, you know, accommodate, but this is a, you know, pretty significant capital program.
Yeah. And then my last comment is, on the Let's Talk Wilsonville site, there's a closed survey that precedes the new survey. It's a little confusing, and I don't know if there's a point to even have that closed survey on it because you try to click it and you can't. It does say "closed" in small font on top, but I don't know. It seems a little confusing to me that, I don't know if there's a purpose to have the old one on there. I think, obviously, people are probably need encouragement to participate, to provide comments on stormwater so the better we can to make it more interesting, the better. And I wouldn't even have known to look there. So even though there's a website to take a survey, I certainly think promoting, I don't know how else, but other ways to get people to be providing comments on stormwater would be...
Well, we put it out on our listservs, and I can talk to our staff member that updates the website to see if we could take that off. And then what we're going to do yet this, it should go out this week. We're going to spend, actually target the 90-plus people that provided the initial survey responses and just circle back with them. And then they'll have through the middle of April.
To provide additional comments?
Yeah.
I see. And the last comment is the meeting date on the staff report, I think, is wrong. It says March 6th, so... But anyways, small issue.
Okay.
I wasn't here on March 6th.
No, that's when the staff report was submitted.
Well, the next staff report says March 13th. So I don't know. Anyways, just maybe I'm not wrong, but, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but... Anyways, thank you.
Sure.
I'm new to this whole project here. So I just got a general question in terms of how it was designed. There's a lot of county property and county wetlands that's mixed into this. In the projects that you have, the quantity of projects, the type of projects, are there any shared projects there with the county? And the second question to that is, how does this interface with those county wetlands?
So just so I'm clear, are you referring maybe to like the Basal Creek area?
Basal Creek, Coffee Lake Creek.
Okay.
And areas such as that. Because it goes right, you know, on the west side of town, it goes right down, or it runs right down the middle of the area there and everything. So are there shared projects there?
There are no specific shared projects in regards to like, you know, ultimately implementing them, but there's still going to be coordination, certainly, when we look at, you know, the development of the Basal Creek area. As far as working, we've had discussions previously with the city of Tualatin about, you know, their design standards and how those relate to ours. So it might have more of a role in terms of when we look at the actual development within that area, how we coordinate that, whether it's... Because even the areas that are being developed in Tualatin will drain down through Tapman Creek and into the city of Wilsonville. So we're trying to at least have that type of coordination. Angela and her team actually worked on the city of Tualatin's stormwater master plan. So that was advantageous in terms of us looking at the modeling for that area and other aspects. And so we'll do as much as we can to coordinate, but really, these projects are going to be implemented through the city of Wilsonville. Thank you.
Thanks. It was very comprehensive. There's a lot of information in there. I definitely like, I tried to focus on like key, you know, topic areas. But one of the things, I appreciate that you're doing the follow-up with the community input and the survey and like following up with people. Another data point I was curious about, because the city does the national community survey every two years. We're doing one now, it sounds like. And I think there's questions in there about water and like stormwater specifically. Do you use that? Or is that, I didn't see it in... That might be another data point to include because it rates the quality of service that community, you know, is scoring stormwater. And so that might just be another thing to like factor in when we're doing like community input points. And I don't know how big that sample size is, but it's probably bigger than 90. I don't know. It's probably like a few hundred at least, so...
Yeah, we get a good response to that. We didn't specifically include that as part of, you know, the public engagement with this, but...
But it's connected, it's related.
Yeah, and I think we do those every three years. Is that correct?
Two years, I think. Yeah. But yeah, just another thing to factor in, so...
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, good work.
Hello, thank you. Last time we met, we learned that the ongoing program in Charbonneau to correct all the stormwater deficiencies there. And I was curious, when we look at the program costs, and of course, that program takes up the bulk of the costs, the rates that are already incorporated should already include and expect that project because it's been ongoing for many years. So that's not additional, as I understand it. That's an expected, known, ongoing 30-year project. So I'm just wondering if the rates have already incorporated that project, or that program, rather, or if that would be expected to influence the rates further?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, typically what... Yeah, I don't, I mean, typically what happens, you know, when we look at the rate structure is we probably are going to target like the near term, you know, or the short term and then, you know, the midterm. And so, you know, otherwise, we're going to have, you know, really substantial rate increases. And then typically, we're revisiting, I mean, even with Charbonneau, I'd have to specifically ask our, our city engineer about that. But typically, you know, we have to kind of reevaluate these lists, you know, every five years, every 10 years, especially every five years. And so with the Stormwater Master Plan, you know, we're going to kind of be revisiting this again in about 10 to 15 years, because that's the typical period that, you know, that we look at these. And so we're really looking at, you know, even though the plan is a 20-year plan, in terms of the rate structure, we're probably closer to like the 10-year period. And we continually revisit those lists on a yearly basis, and then, you know, with a five-year look to.
Okay.
Just to keep it manageable in terms of what we're, we're dealing with our, our rates.
Okay.
I might be able to just expand briefly on that. When, I know when the 2014 plan was established, it was done with a 30-year outlook. I think that's what's documented in the plan. And there's been some projects that have been done since then. And then we also have some that are accounted for financially in the capital project list that we have. So when we assess the cost for continuing that program, we looked at, you know, a 20-year period, it's about that now, but also what the remaining pipe and the remaining structures were going to be. And the benefit of rolling it into this is that, you know, there's been inflation, and so our costs are quite a bit different than what they were back in 2014. So we were able to summarize all of those assets and then cost it out and average it out over that 20-year period. But with the rate study, they'll be able to refine, refine that estimate a little bit more, too.
So the program costs are not changing outside of inflation, the year over year?
Well, and but based on how much has been constructed to date, how much we pulled over into a capital, a dedicated capital project.
Okay.
It got kind of balanced.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, I wanted to say, appreciate you guys looking into the ongoing cost. That often gets overlooked with capital investments. In the, in the first sample, and then hopefully in the ongoing sample, do you, do you feel like there's a good representation from all those areas within Wilsonville of, or do you get, do you know what areas the responses are coming from?
As far as the public input we received?
Yeah, yeah.
As far as like, were the respondents distributed throughout the city? I think, I really don't, I don't know offhand what that distribution was, but it seemed like based on, you know, the comments that we got that there were quite a few different places in the city that people were commenting on, just from that perspective. I mean, I don't know if that really equates to where they live or just things that they're seeing.
Okay.
The survey question does have them put in if it's a business or a resident, you know, general location. Are you on a water body, east side of town, west side of town?
Yeah, it's a little more generalized.
Okay. I just was, I was curious if they're able to see, I haven't looked at the new survey, but if they're able to see like, here's the map here, just what you had showed. Here are where all the projects are.
Where the responses are.
Where are you responding from to, and yeah, and then hopefully we'll get more responses. And I don't, is there a page in this report where it gives you like a summary table of all the projects and programs and the benefits, the costs? And like whether it's an avoidance cost or, or cost avoidance, or if there's going to be, you know, what are the benefits the city's going to gain from it or the people are going to gain from it? And then what, the repercussions of not doing these projects? So it's really clear and concise in a table format to reference. Is there, is there anything like that in this report?
In the exact summary, there's a summary one that has the costs and the like objectives. And then there's a larger version of that table, I think it's Table 7-1, that's with the Capital Improvement Plan itself that is kind of better describes them, talks about the scheduling. It doesn't really get into like, if you don't do this, what is going to happen.
I think that would help when people are going to evaluate whether, especially if it's going to raise rates further, likely will, to evaluate like, does that outweigh the benefit?
Okay, that would be, you know, easy to add. We could do something there. The fact sheets that are associated with each of the capital projects do have a little bit more background information on them.
Yeah, and I was hoping for like a one-stop shop, kind of pulling it all together to make it easy for people. And that's the kind of way to, people can make quicker decisions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
My final comments are just, I, yeah, it was a very comprehensive report. There was, there was a lot to absorb. I do like your comments about a way, because eventually, we're going to get to a point where we're going to have to not really sell, but sell the rate increase to, to the public, right? And if we have a way of saying, the reason for this rate increase is to help with this or prevent this, I think that would go a long way to easing the public's mind when we get to that point. And like Commissioner Semenova said, it's like if it was summarized in a table, it might make it easier to publish, too, so. But yeah, thank you for your hard work, and I, I think it will continue to help us be a livable city, so. Yeah, appreciate it.
Well, thank you for your comments and questions.
Public testimony. All members of the public on the call will be unmuted if they wish to testify. If you wish to testify, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you if you email comments. Please state for the record that staff will read those comments into the record. Do we have any comment cards, public?
I currently have no attendees on Zoom, and we have no comment cards.
No comment cards, all right. So I declare the public hearing closed at 6:35 PM. Do we want to have any internal discussion before we vote with a motion? Nope, we're all shaking our heads. Does anyone, anyone want to do the motion, or do you want me to?
I got it. I move to approve Resolution LP 24-0002, recommending approval of the Stormwater Master Plan.
Second?
Nice.
Second, very good. I just wanted to make a final comment. Resolution LP 24-0002 meets statewide and council goals by its conformance to the comprehensive plan with its citizen involvement, responsible urban growth management, continued assurance of public facilities and services, its encouragement of parks, recreation, open spaces, and environmental resources, and its concern for air, water, and land resource quality. This process began January 11th, 2021 with a survey and a consultant team. On October 11th, 2023, and February 14th, 2024, Planning Commission held work sessions that culminated in today's completed Stormwater Master Plan. Thank you. With this motion and second, I call on Paula for a vote.
Thank you. Yana?
Before we do a vote, can we just have another call to make sure there's no further discussion on the motion?
Okay. Any other further discussion on the motion? Thank you for the redirect. Okay. With resolution, I guess I got to read the resolution, don't I? With resolution LP 2024-002, with the adoption of the Stormwater Master Plan, would you like to do a vote, Ms. Paula?
Sam's call?
Yes.
Yana Semenoma? Yes? Jennifer Willard?
Yes.
Matt Constantine?
Yes.
Andrew Hen, excuse me, Nicole Hendricks?
Yeah.
Chair Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Passes 620.
Well, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Great work.
Onto the next agenda item. Work session on Housing Our Future. I don't have to do, nope. I just asked for staff to present the report.
All right, good evening, Chair Carr, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kim Reibold. I am the Senior Planner here with the city's Planning Division. And tonight, I want to bring you all an update on the Housing Our Future project. The Planning Commission last had a work session on this all the way back in June. And so I know there's some new faces. We did have our consultant team with us at that time, so there was a little more data. We will have them back again to speak with you at a later date. So in the meantime, I just want to give a quick overview on the project and where we're at. Some of this might be slightly repetitive, but I want to make sure that the new members of the Planning Commission are up to speed on this. So the Housing Our Future project seeks to build on prior city work. That involves housing planning, and so this would be projects like the Town Center Planning Effort, adopted in 2018, both the Frog Pond West and Frog Pond East and South Master Plans, the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan that the city adopted in 2020, Middle Housing Implementation that we adopted in 2021, really building on all of that work to assess what actions Wilsonville needs to take over the next 20 years to ensure that we continue to provide housing opportunities for the Wilsonville community. The project will seek to answer questions that we've noted here on the slide, and in doing so, will provide the city with a roadmap for future housing-related planning activities. This project is also required for continued compliance with statewide planning goal 10, which is the planning goal related to housing. So there are two primary work products for this work that are required by state law. The first is Housing Needs and Capacity Analysis, or HNCA. This is a technical document that will assess the city's available land inventory for future housing. It'll look at forecasted future growth and help us to determine if, based on that information, if there is sufficient land area to accommodate the future growth over the next 20 years. The last assessment of this nature that the city completed was in 2014, and we've had a lot of building happen in the city since then. So we are definitely due for this work. This would be ultimately adopted as a sub-element to the city's comprehensive plan and may result in an update in comp plan policies related to housing. The second work product is something that is new to this overall process, which is called a Housing Production Strategy. This is a document, a strategic plan type of document, that will build on what we learned from the HNCA to help us address unmet housing needs in the community. So in some ways, this is kind of similar to the 2020 Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, and so that will serve as a really great starting point for us as we check in on the progress we've made in implementing that plan thus far and think about how we can continue to ensure that we are taking proactive steps as a community to support housing production here that meets the needs for a broad population. So just a highlight of project phasing. I know in some ways, it feels like we've just gotten started with this project, and here we are in Phase 3 already. So I think what's important to note here is that we've been working on, working with this, let me start that again. We have been working with the consultant firm Echo Northwest on this project. So they were, who was before you all in June, preventing some initial background information. We split the project into three phases because in a lot of ways, it was based on some grant funding and funding cycles through the state that are tied to the budget biennium, which is why the first phase ended in June 2023. We planned for a second phase to do some initial engagement activities for the project to bridge that gap between consultant funding and when they would get back under contract with the state. That did take a little bit longer than we were expecting, and so we find ourselves now here in spring of 2024, embarking on the third phase, which is really, as I see it, the bulk of the work to be done for this project. I will highlight that some of that initial technical work was done in Phase 1, and we will be wrapping that up as we relaunch into Phase 3. And that information, a more in-depth report out will be shared with you at a work session later this summer. But I do want to highlight, before we get into our plans for this last phase of the project, just a little bit of feedback that we got from Phase 2. And so this was some initial engagement activities to begin awareness building for the work. It consisted primarily of a housing survey on the Let's Talk Wilsonville platform, engagement at the city's Party Aid in the Park event that was in August, and then a community conversation that some of you all participated in, community conversation on cost burden, and that was in November. I just want to highlight a couple of things we heard from this work that will help inform the larger work we're doing in this third phase. First, I found it really interesting that only 15% of respondents that we got in the survey thought that housing in Wilsonville would be affordable to future generations in the next 10 years. So that's really a part of the time horizon that we are looking at with this work. Others said they, they weren't sure, maybe, but, or they didn't think it would be at all. So that highlights some concerns, I think, that there are in the public that the next generation of Wilsonville households, or potential Wilsonville households, might end up being priced out. Participants did see opportunities to support the creation of housing through both investment in needed infrastructure that would support housing development as well as supporting financially or through other incentives, ways to encourage affordable homeownership and rental opportunities throughout the city. So this is certainly not all of the engagement we'll be doing. I think we'll be doing a lot more in Phase 3 that will help inform where we end up. But these will be initial data points that we have, along with data points that we have from a lot of the other recent housing planning work to feed into the Housing Production Strategy. So looking ahead to this Phase 3 work, this will include finalizing the HNCA closer to the summertime, and then beginning development of the Housing Production Strategy. So there will be additional public events and feedback opportunities, both utilizing Let's Talk Wilsonville as a platform, additional meetings with both the Planning Commission and City Council, as well as really looking at some more targeted outreach opportunities, both culturally specific events, using interviews to talk with people who might often be underrepresented in some of our more traditional outreach methods, and having community conversations with community members about housing to better understand what people feel like their housing needs are. So to inform the production, or the creation of the strategies that will be in the Housing Production Strategy, we plan to establish a project advisory committee. This will be composed of people involved in housing development and agency partners that work in housing-related services. And this is very similar to the approach we took in the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, where we had a cross-section of people, both on the development side, nonprofit side, that could bring their respective knowledge to the table and help inform the city's policymakers as to what strategies would be feasible, reasonable, and help achieve the desired outcomes we have as a city. So this pack would be expected to meet approximately five times throughout the duration of the project. And after reviewing the information and findings from the HNCA and public input that we received throughout the project, we'll provide recommendations on policies and actions for consideration in the Housing Production Strategy. So this is really important because this will help inform a lot of the deliberations that you will have as a group as we work on this project. Because of this, we also think having community voices as part of this group is important, and we would like to invite a member of the Planning Commission. and we would like to invite a member of the Planning Commission to participate on this committee. Not only will that enable you to be more involved with helping to shape some of these recommendations, but then also to bring the perspective back to the larger group as you have conversations about the Housing Production Strategy. So just a couple last pieces about what is new and fresh as we start this final phase of the work. It's really going to be, start becoming more visible over the next few months that we are launching this effort in earnest. We just posted last week a new survey on letstalkwilsonville.com to collect housing stories from the community. We had a conversation with City Council last week to provide them an update as well, and, you know, one of the things that they expressed was that, you know, we did kind of a standard survey, the response rate was, you know, not the highest, and a lot of people aren't necessarily going to, you know, take the time and answer a survey, and, you know, we've heard a lot of similar information over the course of many projects. And really, we want to hear from the community, particularly those burdened by housing costs. So in that conversation on cost burden, you know, people who are spending 30% to 50% of their income on housing costs, you know, trying to have a better understanding of how that is impacting them and their ability to plan for the future or find housing that meets their needs. So in conjunction with our communications team, there will be, in the annual report that is about to go out, a little kind of flyer in there with a QR code link to this housing story prompt, essentially is what it is. We'll also be putting some notifications in the Boons Ferry Messenger, and our communications team will be pushing this out on their various other media platforms that they use, with the opportunity for 10 respondents to get a gift card to their local retailer of choice, if they provide feedback by the middle of May. And so I think this will be a really great way to supplement some of the other data that comes in about this project. It will also, I think, potentially, as we look through those stories, there might be people that we really want to hear from more, could be a good way for us to figure out who to use some of the interviews on that we have planned for this project. So that, tell people, take the, share their story if they are so comfortable. We won't be posting the stories publicly. This will really be just information that we gather that helps inform the work. So then we anticipate that sometime in mid-May, we will be having the first PAC meeting, once we have a better understanding of who from the city is representing us on this group. We will also be doing some solicitation to seek out members here shortly. And by that time, we should have a little more of that technical work wrapped up for the PAC to review. And then our next conversation with the Planning Commission, we're actually planning as a joint council and Planning Commission work session. For those that participated in the November community conversation, there was a pretty wide representation of planning commissioners and city councilors, and we thought that there was a really good exchange of ideas that came out of that meeting. And I think at this early stage in the project, having everybody there to hear the information that we have thus far, and start sharing some ideas before we really start digging into that Housing Production Strategy, I think it'll be a great opportunity. And so that is planned for July 15th, at the work session of the City Council, which will be in here. The window for the work session is 5 to 7. Right now, we've got an hour of that blocked off for our use, so depending on what other items, if they come up on the calendar, it could, you know, influence if we're starting at, you know, 5:15 or 5:30. So I'd say right now, just hold 5 to 7. And we'll provide more information to you as we get closer to that date. So with that, tonight, I am seeking your feedback on who you all as a group would like to select to serve on the PAC, and, you know, if it's your desire and interest, depending on who might be interested, you know, we can certainly entertain having a backup Planning Commissioner to serve as well, if for some reason there's conflict with one of the meetings. I would note that we're not firmly set in terms of time of day that the PAC would meet yet. I would say probably, most likely, this would be a late afternoon to early evening kind of commitment, and we might do some polling. There's balance between getting, you know, wanting to get the experts to participate, but also wanting to have some good public accessibility for this, and we're looking to balance those two items. And TBD in terms of in-person or Zoom participation, it could end up even being a mix of both throughout the course of the project, depending on the information we're presenting. So that, and then if you do happen to have any other thoughts, questions that you want to ask, or, you know, make a note for us to come back to later in the project, we can certainly do that as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any volunteers or comments? Yes?
A volunteer.
Wow. We have a volunteer.
That is something, I was asking that question on my notes before you even said it, and I was like, oh, there's the answer. So, but I want everybody else to weigh in as well, if they're interested.
Thank you. Yeah.
Also, if you need a backup, I'll do the backup. I have a fairly flexible schedule.
That's a good idea.
There you go, we got Plan A and Plan B.
That was easy.
I do have a question. Regarding the burden of cost in the report, could you define that? Is that purchase cost and rents, or is it one or the other?
Yeah, so it is housing cost. So for a renter household, that would be the cost of your rent and utilities. If you are a homeowner household, you know, that's your mortgage, your utilities, other things that come up, like, you know, mortgage interest, or, you know, mortgage, yeah, mortgage insurance, that's what I was thinking of, you know, things like that, that are directly costs that you pay on a regular basis, that are directly related to your housing.
Recurring costs directly related to support the house.
Yeah, so not necessarily like, like if you're a homeowner, you know, and you need a new roof, that wouldn't necessarily, you know, be directly part of your monthly housing cost, but kind of those regular, ongoing housing costs that you have.
Principal interest, taxes, insurance, and, and utilities.
Yep.
Makes sense. Any other comments for her?
Just one, just one comment, thank you for all the work, it's really interesting to hear. The use of the acronym PAC does cause some confusion, especially since you live in a political world, a political action committee, so I know you've done this before, but it did generate some interest for me when I read it the first time, thinking, what are you doing? But anyways, just a point.
I had a similar reaction when I saw it in writing at one point, so I think that is something that, you know, planners love acronyms, our consultants love acronyms, too. I think, yeah, when you see Housing Our Future PAC, that looks like, yeah. So we, I think we can think about that as we roll that out, maybe a
Or just spell it out.
More catchy name, yeah.
Catchy, yeah. And nice that you've upped the game on your $50, I mean, Kerry's offering nothing for his, so. I'm picking one, it's yours.
You can be my communications manager for that one.
Any other comments?
So you mentioned that this advisory committee will have industry experts, and I'm wondering if that includes other experts or planning professionals from other communities? Because I asked the question because I, my commute takes me through Hillsborough twice a week, and, and I see the success there with a lot of duplexes, a lot of middle housing. And, and I compare that to what we're being presented in Frog Pond, and I, I'd love to sit down and chat with them. And so are you going to be able to include anybody like that?
So that is an idea. I think we, we kind of have a draft list, so we're still in draft form, planning to talk with our consultant team, so I think that's a question I can raise to them in terms of, you know, they've worked on similar strategies in other communities across the state, and I'm hoping to get some of their feedback. What, you know, housing developers, because there's like, you know, there's the planning side of things, which we've done a lot of that work, as you're very familiar with, but there's, you know, also the dollars and cents and feasibility side of things, which I think from a planning standpoint is really important for us to understand, because it helps us, you know, figure out, you know, are we doing the right things? So we certainly hope to be inviting a couple of developers who work on the market side of things, particularly, you know, I would love to find a developer or two who's working in the middle housing space, or at least exploring that. I think that would be a really great addition to the group. And so I'll ask our consultants and see what they recommend, you know, a couple, even if it's not participation in the group, because that is sometimes a big ask, you know, whether or not there might be a place for an interview with a couple, one or two key jurisdictions that are experiencing success.
Or some just benchmarking, because I'd love to see what was in their master plan, and how it actually played out in real life, and how they were, what language, what, what strategies they were able to use to get it in the built environment. And there's probably other wins, too, that's just the one I drive by.
Questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Next item is informational, anything staff on City Council, or? Nothing? See a bunch of heads shaking, all right. I guess I'll call for a motion for adjournment. Who wants to do a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second? We are adjourned. 6:59. Okay.[1783.28]